Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Ed meeting. Thank you for coming, everyone. This is our regularly scheduled meeting pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice with in the home news Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, Board Office, Schools, Cablevision Channel 118, Verizon Files Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. Meeting was scheduled for this evening, Tuesday, November 18, 2014. We will take formal action on agenda items. Mr. Mara?
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Roll call, please.
Borselli?
Here.
De Prima?
Here.
Dunn? Hopman?
Here.
Mongan?
Here.
Singh?
Here.
Silikowski?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Andriani?
Here.
Quorum exists?
Thank you. Mr. Dunn did contact me. He had a conflict at work. He will be here, but he's running a little late. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a memorial this evening. The board would like to acknowledge the death of Kay Donahue, a retired secretary, and express our deepest sympathy to her family and friends. If we could have a moment, please. We have a Code of Ethics memo that we'd like to read. Mr. De Prima has volunteered. Thank you.
Okay. Every board member will support, excuse me, and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties.
Thank you, Mr. De Prima. We have some administrative corrections. Mr. Mara?
Members of the public, there are administrative corrections tonight to tonight's agenda affecting several motions on your published agenda. The schedule of those changes is in the back of the studio for your review. For board members, all administrative corrections have been made in the agenda. That was in your packet, and those are highlighted in blue. Anything on your agenda in yellow was not discussed at the draft agenda meeting and therefore new, however, with the exception of the technology purchase in the Supplies, Equipment and Services Section, Resolution 2, which was discussed under new business at the draft agenda meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Andriani.
You're welcome, Mr. Mara. Any questions on the corrections at this time? No. Okay, I need to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Mr. Borselli, I need a second.
Mongan will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, moving into recognition, I know that most people think spending money is what we like to do best, but recognition is what we really like to do best. So, at this point, superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Andriani, and welcome to all our parents, staff, and members of the public that are here tonight for recognition and our board meeting. Recognition number one is move the Board of Education to recognize Jason Chung, an eighth grade student at Carl Sandberg Middle School, for receiving an International Talent Search Certificate of recognition for the John Hopkins University Center for Talented Youth for his academic ability on SAT testing.
Justin.
I'm sorry, did I not say Justin? Justin Chung. I know I have our principal from this school who's going to address this. Dr. Simon?
Good evening. I'm Martha Simon. I'm the principal of Carl Sandberg Middle School. We have several students who are going to be recognized this evening. First, I'd like to invite Justin to come up to the podium. I think I saw him begin. Last year, you can stand right here, and you've got to smile for the camera. There you go. All right. Last year, we had 11 students who participated in the John Hopkins Talented Youth Competition. Justin took the SAT 1, and of the students that were, that took the SAT from Sandberg, Justin was recognized for excellence and received that honor of excellence for this talented youth competition. In particular, he was recognized for his critical reading, which I know will make Ms. Kibler very happy as we move our students towards advanced proficiency in language arts literacy. And we're very proud of you, Justin. We look forward to many more academic success for you. And on behalf of the staff and students at Sandberg, we'd like to provide you with this certificate of recognition. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Recognition item number two, move the Board of Education to recognize three Carl Sandberg Middle School students for receiving the Mahatma Gandhi Art and Writing Contest Awards. Dr. Simon, please take care of that.
Okay, if we could invite Frederick Leo, Megan Benetti, and Nicole Ang to the podium. Again, you've got to squeeze in so you can be on television. There we go. Again, at the end of last year, we had these three students participate in the Mahatma Gandhi Art and Writing Contest. Over 2,000 students, middle school and high school students throughout New Jersey, submitted for this competition, and out of the top 25 in the state, three of those students were Carl Sandberg Middle School students. They were recognized at a ceremony in October at Princeton University where they received their certificates and received their honors. Both Frederick and Megan were awarded honorable mentions for their work in art and writing, and Nicole received second place overall that evening. We're so proud of having such talented students representing our school and the Olbridge School District. Congratulations to all four of our outstanding Sandberg students. And I'd also like to recognize the teachers at Sandberg who support these students and who assisted them in participating in this wonderful opportunity. So, congratulations on behalf, again, of the staff and students. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number three is a very special award and recognition because it recognizes three of our school communities that were just celebrated in Washington, DC, a few weekends ago. Cheesequake School, McDivitt School, and Voorhees School are all recognized as national schools of character. And so, we're going to have a representative from each school come up, a young person representative, to discuss their school. And then we'll have a little unveiling of the banner that each school received in Washington for being chosen as a national school of character. So, we'll have Cheesequake School go first. Sound good? We'll go in alphabetical order. That'll make it easier for us. So, we're going to have the representative from Cheesequake School come up with you, Dr. Ferry.
Okay, so as you heard, we're going to have one student from each school speak. At each school, we had an essay contest about what receiving a national, a national school of character banner meant to them. So, students in all three schools competed in this contest, and Samar's essay was chosen as one that was representative of what the students at Cheesequake felt. So, first, Samar's going to speak. After each student speaks, as Mr. Siderino said, they're going to unveil the banners, and then the principals are going to share in a speech after that.
Dr. Ferry, we can't see the young man over the podium. Nobody at home. Wave. Wave to everybody, because they can see you freening your nose up. No, on the television. Say, "Look at the TV." There you go.
Samar's going to do a great job, and now he knows he's on television, so...
There we go.
Even more nervous now. He's going to do a great job.
Hi, I am Samar Raju, a fifth grader from Cheesequake Elementary School. Earning the Cheesequake National School of Character banner makes me feel like I was on a football team that just won the Super Bowl championship. This banner is the true representation of the climate and culture here at Cheesequake School. We all do the right thing and show character every day, not because of this banner, because it's the right thing to do. The embedded good character within our school environment and community displayed by the teachers, students, and PTA members truly make up our wonderful school. This banner will remind us of the teamwork and dedication that went into receiving such an impressive title, 2014 National School of Character. The teamwork I have experienced within my school is breathtaking and astonishing. I hope you all can experience this too someday, because with teamwork, it makes a colossal accomplishment such as this a reality, but also makes the success and outcome that much more amazing and memorable. This banner will always remind me about the pride and honor I felt surging through me the moment I heard that, the announcement that Cheesequake was a national school of character, and Dr. Ferry and Ms. Zambor were invited to represent our school in Washington, DC. I know in my heart, our school deserves this title of being a national school of character, and the banner symbolize how far we have come in my five years at Cheesequake. Our school holds many special events that help others and enhance our students' character. We have helped numerous disabled kids at Camps Robin, helped food drives each year for those who are less fortunate. We celebrate multiculturalism through our Igor's Landing program. We have kindness club, chess club, and student leadership opportunities such as student council and safety patrol and teacher helpers. And most importantly, we demonstrate wonderful character in all that we do, even on the soccer field. The teachers are always there if you need help, and if you are, and you have great friends that always cheer you up. While our school has a tree of good character, we do not, we do not do the right thing for the leaves or the certificates, but it is always nice to receive them. At Cheesequake, I've been taught that the most important thing is making others feel good. This banner will tell everyone, from students, parents, and new visitors to my school, that Cheesequake is a great place. I think every person played a role in making Cheesequake a national school of character. This banner will remind us that over here at Cheesequake, teamwork is dream work and character is the key to life. I feel this banner will empower and motivate future Cheesequake students to help us once again become a national school of character in 2019. Even though we have earned this banner, our job is not over yet. It is now our responsibility to serve as role models to other schools in New Jersey and our nation, because I think every student deserves the opportunity to go to a school that values the well-being of all its students. We will continue to improve our character education program, and I believe we will have the potential to become the global school of character. While I am excited to attend Sandberg next year, I truly look forward to my sister coming to kindergarten at Cheesequake in 2015 and continuing this legacy as a national school of character. She, just like me, will understand that having good character is the most important lesson in life. I wrote an acrostic poem of what this banner means to me. C, Cheesequake is full of good character. H, have fun and do the right thing. E, empower yourself and motivate others. E, ever so kind and caring. S, show respect every day and everywhere you go. E, empathy helps us to be better people. Q, questions and stands up to bullies. Be an upstander. U, understand how to problem solve in tough situation. A, always lead by example. K, keep demonstrating responsibility and good grades will come. E, every day, we try our best and evoke the six pillars of character in all that we do.
Thank you, Samar. That was excellent. Samar, stay here for a second.
I don't know how anybody follows that. That was great.
I would like you to ask our board president to unveil the Cheesequake banner.
I would love to. Where is it?
Since you're close by, just on the other side. Nice, slight touch. Good job. Just a paper. Just a paper. One, two, three. Go. Hey! We're ready. Stay by close by. We'll do a group picture. I want, I want you to... Stand right there. Right here. Right in front of this. We're going to try and get... Just him? We'll do a group one at the end.
Put all the... Good evening. I'm Laurie Coletti, and I'm the principal of McDivitt School, and this is Naomi Di Novellas, and she is in fifth grade at McDivitt School, and she is going to read her essay.
For McDivitt School to be the national school of character is something that we're proud of. The students at McDivitt School show all six pillars of character. The students are very kind to each other. The students help others out, follow the school rules, tell the truth, and the teachers make the school a better and safer place to learn. For example, we keep the school clean, and we don't treat others poorly. If someone drops their lunch money on the floor, another person would give it back to them instead of keeping the lunch money to themselves. At McDivitt School, we do a lot of service learning projects called Pay It Forwards. When we do a Pay It Forward, we make the world a better place by donating and helping people in need. So far this year, McDivitt has done four Pay It Forwards. One of them was donating spare change to the ALS Foundation. We raised over $700. Our teachers dump buckets of ice water on their heads for a good cause. Another Pay It Forward was McDivitt supports Betty Bean. Betty Bean and her family lost their house and belongings during Hurricane Sandy. We donated household items, clothing, and spare change to Betty and her family. Throughout the rest of the 2014-2015 school year, McDivitt will continue to do Pay It Forwards. Being a national school of character means a lot of things to me. Out of the entire United States, McDivitt was picked as one of the national schools of character. Being a national school of character means, that means to me that the faculty and students show good characters 24/7. It also means that the students in the school are all friends and include each other in activities, like a game. Also, the students and teachers say kind words to each other, like please and thank you. The national school of character is a big award. They don't just give you that award, you have to earn it.
Okay. So, this is our board vice president, Mr. De Prima. Can you ask him to unveil your banner? Mr. Borselli, can you assist him?
Representing Voorhees School, I would like to introduce Anthony Rayner, a fourth grader at Voorhees.
Hi, I'm Anthony Rayner, and I'm extremely happy that Voorhees is a national school of character. To me, this means a lot of things. First of all, people are very respectful. For example, if someone drops their books in the hallway, someone else will help pick them up. There were three new people in our class this year. We welcomed them and introduced ourselves to them. Being a new student can be very scary, but the people in my class made it easy and very welcoming. Voorhees School also doesn't allow any bullying to take place. I have never seen any bullying occur myself, but if I did, I know I would immediately tell an adult. Voorhees also has a fun and happy environment. Throughout the school year, we do lots of fun activities together. For example, we have three class parties, Halloween, winter recess, and the end of the year party. We also have a spring fling where we get to dance and hang out with friends. Another thing we have are field trips, like the sock planetarium, and possibly a college trip. These are just a few examples of the fun things we do at school. Throughout the five years I've been here at Voorhees Elementary School, I've had really nice teachers, Mrs. Disarno, Mrs. Immerman, Ms. Preacher, Mrs. Olson, and now Mrs. Waldman. Each and every one of those, these teachers care for their students. They want us to improve and be good at everything they teach us. Whenever I have a question, I feel comfortable asking my teachers, because I know they will explain the answer. Finally, at Voorhees, I always feel safe. We have a few methods to protect ourselves, such as evacuations and lockdowns. I also know that not everybody could get into our building. People need special permission in order to get inside. So, all in all, Voorhees is an awesome school. It has good teachers, good protection, and good everything. That is why Voorhees is a national school of character.
for them.
On behalf of the students, staff, parents, and others in the Cheesequake, McDivitt, and Voorhees School communities, I'd like to begin by saying how exhilarated, humbled, and honored we are that our schools were judged by school climate experts to be New Jersey State Schools of Character and National Schools of Character. It has been truly gratifying to witness our school cultures evolve and blossom as we've implemented, expanded, and refined our character education programs over the last several years.
Each of our three schools either are, or recently were, Title I schools. Despite the socioeconomic challenges our schools face, we have witnessed our character education efforts help reduce student absenteeism, improve test scores, and bolster academic achievement. The reason for these wonderful changes, in our minds, is simple. Our character education program has fostered a warm, inclusive school climate, and our students feel safe, happy, and valued. The ethnic, racial, religious, and socioeconomic diversity that are in our schools have become our greatest assets. Through specific programs we have in place, our students have moved well beyond demonstrating tolerance to a place where they enthusiastically learn about other cultures and not only accept, but celebrate the rich diversity in our communities.
Character education and academic excellence are not two separate entities. Character education is not fluffy stuff that is a distractor from academic achievement. To the contrary, character education is the foundation that will permit academic excellence to flourish to its fullest potential. Just as adults are less productive at work when they are distraught about a current issue in their personal lives, students, when upset about something from home, from the internet, or from the school itself, will not be able to focus well on academics. Many students in our country come to school every day carrying unknown burdens on their shoulders, invisible wounds in their hearts, and utterly confusing problems on their minds. Nurturing and strong schools can be an elixir. To borrow a quote from an unknown source, "If students come from strong, healthy, functioning families, it makes our job easier. If they do not come to us from strong, healthy, functioning families, it makes our job all the more important."
Regardless of whether our students come from dysfunctional homes or outstanding and nurturing ones, comprehensive character education programs allow schools to build a culture where students will flourish. The best schools are focused on high academic standards and, at the exact same time, are safe havens, safety nets, and are filled with caring and unusually committed educators who understand that it is only through connecting with students that we can reach them and teach them. To watch teachers in our school teach the common core standards, as well as any teachers we have seen, and to simultaneously witness them connect with all students, honor students, students who are just learning English, special education students, students who are easy to teach, and students whose behaviors are problematic and who make them dig deeper, well, this makes us extraordinarily proud principals.
News headlines provide us with seemingly endless stories of school shootings, school violence, and bullying. We are pleased to say that we work in a state, New Jersey, that has one of the toughest anti-bullying laws in the nation. Anti-bullying legislation is important because it demands every school to take appropriate action to address bullying. But the solution to eliminate bullying, to eradicating school violence, is not so much written in laws and legislation, but is instead in here and in here in the minds and hearts of our students, teachers, and school communities. Character education cultivates school climates, where kindness, not bullying, is the social norm and the only acceptable action, and where respect, not violence or aggression, is the celebrated and widespread cultural expectation.
is the celebrated and widespread cultural expectation.
The three National School of Character banners that are about to be, or that just were unveiled, are symbolic of the team effort of the school communities of Cheesequake, McDivitt, and Voorhees. The three guidance counselors of our buildings, Mrs. Angela Ziemba from Cheesequake, Mrs. Phyllis Bloom from McDivitt, and Mrs. Fay Bodenstein from Voorhees, are commended for their tireless efforts in championing character education in our schools and for spearheading teams of dedicated teachers who completed the rigorous application in each of our buildings. These banners are symbolic of a thriving school culture that has come to fruition because of committed teachers and staff members who lead by example, students who show kindness, respect, responsibility, citizenship, caring, and trustworthiness on a daily basis, and parents who have partnered and worked alongside us.
Finally, there are over 97,000 public schools in the United States. Yet only 40 in our country were named by Character.org as National Schools of Character in 2014. The fact that three of our nation's 40 national schools of character for 2014 were here in Old Bridge speaks to the thriving school climates developed at Cheesequake, McDivitt, and Voorhees, and also speaks to the incredible culture that contagiously continues to spread throughout our district. Old Bridge now has five national schools of character, eight state schools of character, has additional elementary and secondary schools applying to be schools of character this year, and is in the process of submitting an application early next month. This was supposed to symbolize teamwork, and that was just teamwork because the rest of my speech was not there. Is in the process of submitting an application early next month in hopes that we may be judged to be a district of character. Old Bridge has emerged as not only a leader in the state of New Jersey, but is now prominently in the national spotlight. As just one example, on Saturday, November 1st, at a gala dinner in Washington, DC, there were four keynote speakers. The first three were Dr. Jack London, CEO of a $3.7 billion IT company who has written a book about the importance of building character in our nation's military and in companies; Mr. Hal Urban, a renowned character education expert who has spoken in hundreds of schools throughout the US; and Mr. John Engler, a three-term former governor of Michigan who is now the head of the Business Roundtable, who explained the need for corporations to formalize character education and ethical protocol manuals for all employees to follow. The fourth person who was asked to speak was Dr. Kathy Hoker, our Old Bridge Assistant Superintendent, and she spoke about how to build character education programs and foster warm school climates throughout a school district. We the only school district in the country asked to speak at this gala dinner, and Dr. Hoker was asked to speak because Character.org has witnessed firsthand the incredible momentum and culture we are building here in Old Bridge. To listen to a three-term governor of Michigan speak just moments before our Assistant Superintendent spoke illuminated how far Old Bridge has come. The leadership of our central administration team, the strong support of our Board of Education, and the commitment of everyone within our school district has resulted in our district receiving national recognition. But most importantly, we are helping to shape children who will not only thrive academically, but who will demonstrate character when in the spotlight and when no one is looking. We are humbly part of this thriving district, honored once again to see our National School of Character banners unveiled, and excited to see how the bright future of our Old Bridge students will shape our town and our world. Thank you.
Could the students, the students back up to the stage as well?
I'm sure there are a couple of parents. This is a good photo op for you with your cameras.
Okay. That was tremendous and something to be very proud of. And I have a new catchphrase: teamwork is dream work. That's gonna be on a t-shirt soon. Okay. Item number four: move the board to recognize Donna Pacillo, elementary computer teacher, for her efforts in being awarded the $500 STEM Grant from First Energy and PSENG for McDivitt Elementary School. So if Principal Coletti could join me.
Hello, Gen. I would like to introduce Mrs. Donna Pacillo, McDivitt's computer teacher, and Ms. Roseanne Moran, Director of Technology. We are here to recognize Ms. Pacillo's support of STEM. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. A few years ago, Ms. Pacillo attended a STEM workshop at Rowan University. She invited the STEM professor to visit McDivitt School with a few of her students. They came for the afternoon and worked with our students to make lip gloss, nests for eggs, supported teamwork, and gave the students the opportunity to experience a large variety of STEM activities. The success and interest generated by this event prompted Ms. Pacillo to look for STEM materials to bring into her computer classroom. With support from Ms. Roseanne Moran, she ordered a few reusable STEM projects to use with fifth grade. Ms. Pacillo invited the students to come in before school, during lunch recess, and after school to participate in making these projects. McDivitt's STEM Club was born and was wildly successful. Mr. Silikowski brought STEM to the attention of the members of the Curriculum Committee last year. This past summer, Ms. Pacillo wrote a grant application for her STEM Club. The grant was for $500 and was offered by First Energy PSENG. We were thrilled to find out that Ms. Pacillo has been awarded the grant. Ms. Pacillo plans on purchasing more STEM materials to bring into her STEM Club. This year's STEM Club is already up and running. The students are excited, engaged, and collaborating with one another to complete these projects under Ms. Pacillo's guidance. Ms. Pacillo is commended for her dedication and hard work for our Old Bridge students. The staff, parents, and students are extremely proud of Ms. Pacillo's continued efforts to enhance and further STEM education. Thank you for all you do, and congratulations on being awarded the STEM Grant, Ms. Pacillo.
I started looking into STEM material when I, right after I started looking at colleges with my son for engineering, I became interested in... A lot was brought up throughout the orientations about how students don't really know what engineers do, what they are. And I started asking my classes, and they really had no idea. So I started looking for ways to incorporate STEM activities into my lessons. And little by little, you know, we, we did a few little things. Then last year, we really took off with some kits that we ordered through Roseanne Moran. And one of, one of the bigger projects was that the students researched renewable energy, solar, wind, hydroelectric. And they researched it, did a PowerPoint, and then they built all these models, and we tested them. One of the moments that really stands out is when we had some of the solar cars, and I had 30-watt, 60-watt, and 100-watt bulbs. And, you know, the 30-watt bulb on the solar panel really made it go hardly at all, maybe a half inch. 60-watt, maybe two inches. The 100-watt, it went about five inches. Then we took them outside, and as soon as the sun hit the solar panels, they took off, like, just took off. It was crazy. The kids were jumping and screaming, and it just showed them how powerful the sun is. And, you know, then we did other experiments with the water models and the wind models, but it's been really exciting, and the kids are just loving it, so. Now we're going to buy electronics kits. There's kits called Little Bits where kids can make circuits instantly and make all sorts of things, so. We're excited about that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we have to move the recognition portion first.
Mongen will move.
Okay, Ms. Mongen has moved. Do I have a second? Mr. Weber has seconded. Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Burcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes, and congratulations to everybody. Sorry.
Mongen?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andreani?
Yes.
Motion's one through four, pass.
Okay. Well, we allow people to make a gracious exit. Every time I say I'm going to ask them to wait until you at least can talk, Ms. Anderson, but... When you're ready, Ms. Anderson.
It's a great idea. Maybe in the future, I don't think there's a problem with it. Maybe we'll move the report of the student representative to before recognition.
That would be a good idea.
I think that would be an excellent idea. Go ahead, Ms. Anderson. President Anderson, I should say.
Recently at Old Bridge High School, the girls' volleyball team won the GMC Championship for the second year in a row against South Brunswick. The girls' soccer team made it to the GMC Finals against East Brunswick, but unfortunately, they lost 1 to 0. Powderpuff will be held this Monday at Lombardi Field. Tickets are $6, $5, and it'll be at 6:00 PM. Ski Club is backed by popular demand, and a parent meeting was held on Monday. A number of students have joined Student Senate this year, and we will hold our third meeting of the year tomorrow, 12th period, during school. The Old Bridge High School food drive is led by Club Interact, who distributes bags in each class and team up with Student Senate and peer to encourage students to donate cans. The junior ROTC also donates an overwhelming amount each year and delivers them to the local food bank. The peer program is participating in Operation Christmas Child, where students and staff send gifts to children across the world in a shoebox for the holidays. The marching nights are sponsoring a dance marathon called Dance All Night for students from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM, December 6th, at the high school, to benefit their trip to Normandy, France. The drama department will present a night of one acts at 7:00 PM on November 20th in the high school auditorium at the main building. It'll be $5 per ticket, and tickets will be sold at the door. The Old Bridge High School app is going to be released to select students chosen by the administrators from each grade to test out and excite other students. It will be released for everyone within the new year.
Okay, Ms. Anderson is done. President Anderson is finished. And now? Mr. Sedino? You have no technically, technical assistance? We now have our superintendent's report. Mr. Sedino?
Thank you, board. There's mandates that superintendents must adhere to, and tonight is one of those mandates. The report can be arduous and boring at times, but it's important information. And this report is about the HIB Violence and Vandalism Report that administrators must give twice a year. So every year, superintendents are required to report to the Board of Education and the public on incidents of violence, vandalism, which have occurred in the district the previous school year. Within the passage of the 2010 Law 122, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, incidents of HIB as well as violence and vandalism must be reported twice a year. Period 1 consists of the time between September 1st through December 31st, and Period 2, January 1st through June 30th of that same school year. And both reports required to, are required to have monthly collection of input into the state's reporting system. That electronic reporting system counts the number of incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse. Also, it reports on vandalism, whether the police were notified and a complaint was filed, or no complaint was filed. It also reports on in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, expulsions, unilateral removals, or removal by an administrative law judge. It also reports on the offenders and the victims, whether they're student offenders or student victims, school personnel victims, or student victims of violent criminal offenses. The report provides on what disciplinary action was taken, if any, such as assignments or instruction to support services, in-district programs, home assignment, home instruction, or out-of-district programming. So in the, this report is Section 2, or Period 2, from January to June of 2014, so this past spring. In Old Bridge, we had 24 incidents of violence, six incidents of vandalism, two weapons offenses, and 12 substance abuse offenses, and 65 of them were unduplicated. There was zero cost to the district on any of the vandalism. And I think one of the things we've seen is with the increase of our security cameras throughout the district, we are seeing a drastic decline in vandalism. Section C reports as the police were notified on 11 occasions and with no complaints filed, and three times with a complaint filed. We've had 19 incidences of in-school suspension, 67 out-of-school suspensions, zero expulsions or removals by an ALJ judge, and three suspensions of privileges. Section D speaks to the offenders and their victims. We had 74 student offenders, 33 student victims, one school personnel victim, and zero student victims of violent criminal offenses. Section E, in that section, we saw that 41 times they were assigned to educational programs, instructional and/or support services, which can be, being assigned to a student assistance counselor. There was zero in-district programs, 37 home instructions or home assignments, and zero out-of-district programs. The next portion of the report is the HIB offenses. We had 21 examples of HIB offenses. On all, on all of those cases, the investigation was completed within 21 days as required by law, and the Board of Education decision was rendered within 21 days as required by law, so we are in compliance in that area. The nature of the HIB offenses were, six were related to race... The nature of the HIB offenses were, six were related to race, three to color, two for religion, zero for ancestry, one for gender, two for sexual orientation, one for gender identity and/or expression, four for mental, physical, or sensory disability, and eight for any other distinguishing characteristics. The mode in which that HIB offense was recorded was one with a gesture, zero were written, 19 were verbal, two were physical, and three were electronic communication. This disciplinary action taken in those situations were, 11 were other or none, zero were expulsions, five were in-school suspensions, 11 were out-of-school suspensions, zero unilateral removals by a judge, two were detentions, and three were suspensions of privileges. That portion concludes our violence, vandalism, and HIB reporting as required for that time period. Tonight, I said, well, let's have a progress towards goals and see if we can take this, which is seemingly negative information, and see what positivity we can find in it and looking at this data. So recently, the Department of Education reported on the SAT throughout the state of New Jersey and the nation. And the result was that the SAT results in New Jersey, on average, had gained by one point in the past year, and there was a decrease of, by three points on average nationally. In Old Bridge, however, we increased from a score of 1,474, which was our 2008 score, and I tie that back to the, some data I'm going to show you later, to the 1,559 in 2014. An average score of 1,559 brings Old Bridge High School 88 points above the national average and 45 points above the state average. Why this is significant, because only six years prior, Old Bridge was hovering at the national average. So that's a significant gain in that short period of time. Just this past Friday, Old Bridge School District once again received great news. They were placed on the College Board, which is the executive committee that oversees AP and the SAT, honor roll. Only 547 school districts in the entire of North America were recognized to the College Board to be being placed on this academic honor roll. And the reason they're placed there is for simultaneously increasing the number of advanced placement coursework opportunities there are for students, while maintaining or increasing the percentage of students who score three or higher on those AP exams. A mere 34 districts in, out of 296 eligible districts in New Jersey have met this criteria to be placed on the AP honor roll this year. For Old Bridge, this is not our first time on that. So that is something very rare to be placed on the AP honor roll in multiple years. So then how do I compile these two reports together? And I, and I saw a very interesting trend when you're looking at schools' culture, what we've seen tonight with our schools of character and our academic results. We see that in 2008, 2009, we had 142 incidences of violence and vandalism and substance abuse district-wide. And that was before we started reporting on HIB, which started to increase our number of incidents. In 2013, 14, we're down to 75 total incidents district-wide, dropping by 67 events over those, over that time period. In 2008, 2009, we had zero schools of character. We now, in 2013, have eight schools of character, five national schools, and one national model school of character. So we've seen that increase in positive school culture, and like Dr. Ferry said, we are now in the process for applying for a district of character. And the results, how they result academically for our students, we saw that in 2008, 2009, we were at the national average of 1,474 for our SAT scores, and we've increased that this year to 1,559, increasing our SAT results by 59 points. So in a time when people in your community may ask you, give me a snapshot. What's going on in Old Bridge schools? How are they doing? I think this is a tremendous opportunity for you to say, the schools are moving in a terrific direction. And I'm always the first one to say that the greatest room in any organization is the room for improvement. But I think this documents that we are moving in the positive direction, and I just ask that everyone follow along with that. This bus is moving in a great direction, and I ask you to get on board. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sedino. I was trying to do some paperwork in the meantime. Okay. Moving right along. Mr. Mara, do we have any correspondence?
No, there's no correspondence.
No correspondence. Special Committee reports, I know we have at least one.
Yes, I have one.
Mr. Borsili?
So just last week, November 12th, we had a strategic planning meeting. It was a very good meeting. It was quite long, but we got into a lot of detail. No decisions were made, but a lot of great ideas were, were brought up and discussed. There was a demographer report that was done for the district, and there were a number of key things within the report that we wanted to discuss. One of them was the fact that in, in Salk School, there is some overcrowding. There's limited space. I don't really want to say overcrowding. I think it's more limited space in Salk School. And the principals from both Salk School and Sandberg School have expressed an interest in moving to a block schedule, but it would not be possible with the limited space that we have available at Salk School. So we discussed that, and there's, there's certain reasons back and forth as to why we should do it versus why we shouldn't do it, but there was great, definitely some great dialogue to it, and it needs to be discussed further. At the end, we, we decided that a, a separate meeting needs to take place on enrollments within the district. So I will be scheduling another strategic planning meeting where we will just discuss enrollments. The demographer report did state that there has been decline in enrollment over the past number of years, and that that will more likely continue. There is some new construction. It's predominantly over on the Salk and Voorhees side of town, but that's not going to make any great impact on the enrollment numbers. So we will, I will be setting up that meeting so we can discuss enrollments. We did want to talk a little bit about some revenue generating ideas. A number of things were discussed, from finding ways to create a online adult high school, being that we no longer have the adult high schools that were sold, that we can find ways to, number one, help those that want to be able to get a, a high school diploma, get that diploma and achieve that, and in addition, be able to bring some, some revenue into the district. So that will be discussed a little bit further in detail at a, at another time. Mr. Silikowski and Ms. Kibler also gave an update, that they, they had discussions with the, with Middlesex County, as far as renting out the, the planetarium, making the planetarium available to other school districts within Middlesex County. And there is a great desire for other districts to do field trips to our planetariums. So that's, that's moving forward, and that will generate some income. There are a few things that need to be taken care of in the planetarium, mostly cosmetic, some new paints, some new carpeting, fix a few seats, that type of thing, to make it, you know, a little bit more up to date. We discussed the ADA compliance within the schools. There are schools that are a little bit more ADA compliant than others. When there is a child that needs to go to a school that's ADA compliant, we, we can accommodate that student. But what the real issue is when a student has a short-term disability. So in other words, they've got wheelchair-bound because they've had a surgery, or they have a broken limb, and so for a number of weeks, or maybe a month or two months, they're in a wheelchair, and then there's, there could be some issues with that school. So that will need to be addressed, but the administration brought that to our attention so that we can discuss that in the future as well. We discussed the, the overall district and the state of the buildings, and we will need to plan a, a meeting as well, just to discuss that, being able to take a look at where our buildings are and what is our plan, what, what is it that we desire to do in the future as far as either bringing them up to date or, or some other options as far as moving forward with them. So I'll be planning something for that in the future as well. And then we briefly got an update from administration on the 2015-16 school calendar. They are in discussions with the calendar committee, but I guess the biggest question on that is where do we want to start the school year? Next year, Labor Day is very late. I believe it was September 7th?
7th, yeah.
So it gives us almost half a week that we can get some classes started before Labor Day. But do we want to start that on half-day, on Wednesday? Or do we want to have a delayed opening to give the teachers and the staffs there time to have staff meetings prior to the students coming in? So that'll have to be discussed as well throughout the calendar committee. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. Any questions? No? All right, anybody else? Any other board member have a committee report? Does not appear to be so. Moving along, we're at the residence section. Is there anyone that is here that would like to comment, ask questions about any of the items on the agenda? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving along, policy is next. Mr. Silikowski, I don't know if you want to discuss anything. If you do, please do, and then I'll ask you to move it.
We covered that last meeting, I believe, and I'll just move policy.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Borsili, oh, any discussion? Mr. Borsili was second. Ms. Mongan, are you, were you going to second?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara.
DePrima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. My curriculum is next, and that's numbers one through nine with, we have some yellow in there, so we have some changes. Do I have a motion?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. A second?
Borsili will second.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. Any discussion? Can I bring up the New Hampshire? Can I bring up the New Hampshire? I just wanted to mention that in number, number eight, that the visit to the out-of-district placement is in New Hampshire. That happens to be for a, a student that needed a special placement. So in case there was any board discussion on, on that, they're traveling to see if the facility is acceptable and agreeable.
I'll just, I'll just summarize it. The, a, a parent is seeking placement for their child in New Hampshire, and we're doing our due diligence and sending our staff there so they can speak soundly about the educational environment there and whether we can meet the, the educational requirements that are being offered in that state.
With that, numbers one through nine, may I have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
Oh, we have a motion. Do you have a second? We're done? Oh, sorry. We already discussed. Anybody else? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mara.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Uh, motions one through nine, pass.
Thank you. Athletics, one and two, may I have a motion?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. A second?
Second.
Mr. Weber, second. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
The resolutions one through two pass.
Thank you. Finance, we have numbers one through 11. May I have a motion?
I guess I'll do it. I never do.
Mr. DePrima is going to move. Finance, can I second?
Sure.
Okay, Mrs. Andriani will second. Any discussion?
Just that I'm going to abstain on voting for myself on the bill list.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Any other? No? Mr. Mara, roll call.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Uh, motions one through 11 pass, with the exception of the abstention from Mrs. Mongan.
Thank you. Non-certificated Personnel Office, one and two, do I have a motion, Mr. DePrima?
I'll move it, and I'd like to read it out of mind.
Okay, Mr. Weber?
The following secretarial staff member with deep appreciation for her years of dedicated service to the district, Stephanie Guller, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent Administration, 26 and a half years effective March 1st, 2015. I've known Mrs. Guller for a very long time. She's also the lady who sends you all those enrollment reports every month. So we wish her well in her retirement and, and thank her for her service to the district.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Weber.
I will second that motion, and I will, also would like to recognize Mrs. Guller. She was one of the first people I met when I started working in the district in 1993, and she is a very dedicated employee, and I wish her much luck in retirement. I can highly recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Any further discussion? I just want to add, good luck. I've now retired as well, so it's a very interesting phase of life, but good luck to you, Ms. Guller. And with that, Mr. Mara, roll call.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one through two pass.
Thank you.
Just with that vote already being done, I didn't want to dissuade anyone from voting for Ms. Guller's retirement. So I, I will say that as a person who worked closely with her, she'll be missed for not only her expertise, but the person that she is. So thank you, Ms. Guller, for all of your work and dedication to Old Bridge.
What can we force her to say? I did that once.
Can't now. We just voted to accept her, to accept her retirement. We can put it on next month to rescind if we want, Mr. DePrima. All right, non-certificated Personnel, other, I believe, is one through nine. I need a motion, a second?
I'll second.
You'll second? We need a first, first. Mr. Singh will first.
I'll first.
All right, Mr. Weber is first, Mr. Singh is second. Any discussion?
I thought somebody seconded him.
I see no discussion. I hear no discussion. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Uh, motions one through nine, pass.
Thank you very much. All right, certificated Personnel, which is numbers one through, you're supposed to tell me this, Mr. Roberts, 17. We have a lot of colors on this. We have yellow, we have blue, and we have some kind of checkerboard square going on, on, on ours. I need a, a motion, a second, and I'm sure there'll be discussion.
DePrima will move.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima. Do I have a second?
Can I second now?
Yes, you can. Mr. Singh is seconding. You could be the steady, steady seconder if you'd like, Mr. Singh.
I'll still second.
Okay. Mr. Singh is seconding. Any, any discussion?
Madam President, could you read that in mind?
I certainly could. Move the Board approve the retirement of the following staff member with deep appreciation for their years of dedicated service to the district, and this is a Mr. Albert Grover, who was a physics teacher at the high school with 11 years of service, and he is retiring effective the end of the year, January 1. And we will miss him for his service, especially since he's physics, and that's very difficult to find, so I wish he would stay.
Finding a unicorn. It's like finding a unicorn.
Okay. Physics teachers are very difficult to find, and again, Mr. Grover... Physics teachers are very difficult to find, and, uh, again, Mr. Grover, if you're listening, I'd like you to stay. Any other discussion? All right, no, no further discussion? So, we are one through seventeen, and we're ready to vote. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Weber?
Yes.
Borcelly?
Yes.
Deprima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one through seventeen, pass.
Thank you very much, and, uh, Ms., what?
Please take care of that, please.
Oh, I certainly can, but I thought you would. Yeah, all right, I, you don't want to do it, Mr. Sittidino?
You've been doing so well.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Granata is here someplace? Have, please stand up. Go, oh, they can't see you from that. You might as well come over and wave to the camera. All right, Ms. Granata has, um, now been, uh, motioned and seconded and now approved as our new elementary principal, um, replacing Ms. Misk- uh, Dr. Miskowitz, who we will miss greatly. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Granata. Next time, we'll put you on the spot even further and have you say something. Okay. Non-certificated personnel, transportation, one and two.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any discussion? Mr. Mara, roll call.
Borcelly?
Yes.
Deprima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Thank you. Supplies, equipment, services, one, two, and three. I need a motion? Mr. Singh will second, but I need somebody to, I, I need to, all right, Ms. Andriani will make the motion, and Mr. Singh will second. Any discussion? Mr. Mara, roll call.
Borcelly?
Yes.
Deprima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh? Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Uh, resolutions one through two, pass.
Thank you very much. Transportation, one, two, and three. The president would like to recognize a motion on the floor.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan.
I'll second.
Mr. Borcelly will second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mr. Mara, roll call.
Deprima?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borcelly?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Uh, resolutions one through three, pass.
Thank you. Uh, miscellaneous, one through, come on, Mr. Roberts, mister, uh, one through four. Uh, please make note of the meetings and make sure that your name is there if you were indeed in attendance. And with that, I need a motion.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan.
My bad.
Mr. Singh will second. Any discussion? Everybody check their names? All right, Mr. Mara, roll call.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borcelly?
Yes.
Deprima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four, pass.
Thank you very much. Um, at this point, I guess the, the board should, uh, recognize the election results. Uh, Mr. Weber, uh, will be joining us again for another three-year term um, with thirty-three-hundred-six votes. Um, I will be returning as well with thirty-two-eighty-two votes counted. Uh, Mr. Dunn will not be with us, but Ms. Kelly Ellis Foster will be. She's been in the audience, um, several times in the past. She is, she's here? Oh, this she is, she is here. Um, she had an FBLA, uh, commitment, so I guess she was able to make it over. But anyway, Ms. Ellis Foster is here, and she will be joining us in January. Uh, congratulations, Ms. Foster, for your, uh, election results. Um, at that point, we have hearing of residents. If there's anybody who would like to speak on any item, questions, concerns? I don't believe so.
It's a matter of public record, I don't think so.
If you'd like to vote on it, we can do that. Okay.
That'll add one more vote, or nine more votes for all of you.
Oh, then we, oh. All right, it doesn't appear that we have anybody that has, um, any comments or, or questions at this point. So, we're going to move into old business. I have something, um, that I need to bring up during our s- board self-evaluation. I, uh, during discussion, we had talked about putting together a list of, uh, goals that we could, um, coalesce and see if there's something that was a high priority for the majority of the board members. At this point in time, I've only received two of them, um, and my own. So, there are several of, of your that, that are outstanding. If, um, you wish me to put that in, um, my little report that I have, we can certainly do that, but I wish you could get that to me as soon as possible. Um, the other thing is, I don't know if any of you are targeted for the, uh, schools of character. Some people have gotten emails about a survey. Um, it was, you have, make sure that that's done by Friday. Um, it's not all the board members. Um, there's several staff, the parents, that there was a large, um, um, a large grouping that was, they were sent emails. So, please make sure you have that done by, um, Friday, I believe. And, Ms. Kibler?
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. I would just like to once again acknowledge the board for the opportunity they afforded me to, um, participate in the Confucius Institute Rutgers University, uh, study tour to Beijing and Shanghai, China, from November first to November tenth. And I have to tell you, it was, um, quite a momentous trip. And I certainly, um, sang the praises of Olbridge at, uh, Jalen University when I presented the report on our world language program. And I certainly, uh, credit, uh, Mrs. Anahida Keeler for her undaunted efforts in, uh, forging ahead and creating the Mandarin Chinese program from grades five through twelve. Um, this was so well-received by the university, and other members on the tour, particularly from Sea Caucus and Matutian and other districts, were very impressed with our program. And I can tell you that we will be entertaining visitors, uh, to our schools to observe the program. One of the aspects of the program that they were most impressed with was the intern program that Mrs. Keeler instituted last year with the gentlemen who came and worked with our classes. And this year, we have Alice, who is doing a fabulous job and has just been so well-received by the students and the staff. So, it gave me a great opportunity to once again not only put, um, Olbridge in the national forefront, but in the international forefront with the outstanding efforts that we have put forth in the area of world language. And I have to say, um, it was quite an experience to stand at the Great Wall, to walk the steps of the Great Wall, and to be in Tiananmen Square as an individual who had lived through the whole uprising in Tiananmen Square a number of years ago. So, I thank you all, and most appreciative to Mr. Sittidino for recommending me for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kibler. I'm, I'm glad that you had a educational experience and a nice, and a nice time as, as well. And thank you for representing us with such dignity and honor. Thank you. Any new business? Okay. Any good of the order? Anybody want to say anything? Do we want to start?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, Mr. Silikowski.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, congratulate, uh, all the students in the recognition portion of the, uh, agenda here today. Uh, I'd like to congratulate our retirees and all our new hirees, because there's quite a few on the list. Uh, also like to, uh, recognize the three schools of character, all the teachers in those buildings, their families, and the administration, and have a very safe holiday, because this is probably one of the most heavily-traveled holidays of the year, Thanksgiving. Be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silikowski. Anybody else want to stay at this end of the table?
Sure, I'll go.
Oh, Mr. Deprima, go ahead.
Um, just to echo what Mr. Silikowski said, congratulations to everybody. You know, you could take all this other stuff and, and throw it out. This is what it's all about. The children, the, the successes they're having, the, the teachers. People are going to get tired of hearing me saying how good everything is, but it, it's true. Everything is just going so great right now. Uh, Ms. Granata, as an ex-Cooper parent, congratulations. Seems like a million years ago that my kids were there, but, uh, I'm sure you, you'll do a great job, and thank you. As Mr. Silikowski said, also have a great holiday, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deprima. Ms. Mongan?
I also just wanted to, um, wish everyone in this wonderful community and my colleagues here a happy, healthy, wonderful Thanksgiving. Make sure you get to have your dessert before you rush out to the mall at six o'clock.
Mr. Weber?
Uh, enjoy Thanksgiving. I think it's the one day that you can, uh, eat with abandon. And, uh, I think, uh, take that opportunity so you can diet the other three-hundred-and-sixty-four. That's my plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singh?
I'll second everyone. And, uh, the recognitions tonight and these boards, uh, speak of the high, you know, the, the work, the kind of work that our schools and teachers are doing in building a character of students. So, thank you very much, everybody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Singh. On this side, Mr. Borcelly?
Sure. Um, I'd like to also congratulate everybody for the recognition tonight. Um, and to the point that Ms. Kibler was bringing up about our cultural programs, um, they've just been outstanding. Um, from the Chinese program that, that we have, uh, the German program, we had some German students here, I guess it was about a month ago, and, uh, I was able to go to the welcoming for them at the town center. Um, and I, I did know a couple of families in town that were hosting them, those, uh, the, the German students. And, uh, from my understanding, the Germans, students had a terrific time here. Um, they were, they were cared for very well. They enjoyed our great location of being able to get into New York City and other, uh, great places, and they had a lot of fun here, and hopefully our students will, uh, be treated to a really great time when they get off to Germany in the spring. And, uh, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Simon for, uh, inviting me to the Aspire to Inspire. Um, it was a, uh, outstanding show. It was absolutely terrific. The students were incredible, um, and they just relayed such great messages about bullying and intimidation and so on. It was, it was a really powerful show, and it was terrific. Um, and it's, it's, you know, the, the, uh, the talent is always terrific in our schools, um, but the way that those students really, um, portrayed their messages was, was, was something special.
Thank you, Mr. Borcelly. And that, the, yes? Okay.
Yes, I would also like to congratulate all of the children under recognition. And, um, also, the three schools of National School of Character. I would just like to thank each and every person that was involved. The teachers, the principals, the students, the parents, everyone that was involved with that. It, it really is exceptional to be able to know that we have that many schools in Olbridge that are under the National School of Character. It just shows you how positive this school district is going forward. Um, I also would like to, uh, congratulate Stephanie Guller on her retirement. She has done a wonderful job in the district for many, many years. Good luck, and we will certainly miss you. And, uh, also, um, I would like to thank all of the employees that were involved with the Parent University, along with Ms. Kibler, who has put this together. Um, I think maybe we've had seven years of this so far, and I don't think I've missed any one of them. And it certainly is so rewarding to see the amount of employees that were involved with this Parent University. I don't know if anybody else had the opportunity to go, but I was there. And, you know, just, it just, the, for the parents to be able to see, going to each table, the different things that each one of the schools have done, the videos and, and all the education that was going on that night, and everybody that was involved in it. I really would like to thank each and every one of them for being there and being involved to that degree, to show Olbridge, these are the positive things that our school district does. These are the wonderful employees that we have going forward. And I hope each and every one of them, okay, are rewarded in some way for helping these children, to educate them in every way that they have done. I also would just like to, you know, have everybody, make sure that everybody has a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving. And other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopman. Uh, before I go, um, Dr. Hoker, we did not give you a chance to speak at all this evening. Would you like to say something?
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to thank our schools of character for coming out tonight. It is really a privilege to see how this has all evolved. Um, and I, I just, the way that the students spoke really says a lot about what is going on in our schools and how they feel about it. Um, and I know that anyone that has gone through the application process or is going through it now, at certain points will say, you know, should they or shouldn't they continue? And I think once they have, they, they can speak to the, to the fact of how it brings the school community together. Um, now that we're going through the process as a district of character, I can see what's happening, um, across grade levels, across, uh, elementary to secondary to, to the high school, and how people are coming together to get this, get this done. And it really does make a difference. Um, I think that's a huge value from going through the process. It's not, although the recognition is fantastic, it's, that's not all that it's about. It is about the results that you get from going through the process It is about the results that you get from going through the process and the impact that it has within the individual buildings and on the students and the staff, and the parents as well. I would just like to remind everyone, the staff, that we have our second annual Give Back Jubilee scheduled for November 26, that MJ is at 1:30. You have to sign up for that event. And also congratulate Kathy Granata and welcome you to the administrative staff, and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Dr. Hoker. Mr. Mara, you didn't say anything tonight either, but...
Well, I'd just like to congratulate the three schools of character, Dr. Ferry, Mrs. Coletti, and Mrs. Lowry. It's a great job. It's an honor to be associated with this school district. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. I wanted to say that I, I was so astounded to see 20, perhaps 30, staff members take the time out of their busy schedules to come out to support not only their schools, whether they're schools of character, but to support the young people who were representing them. It's, we all have busy lives and busy schedules, and to see that kind of turnout from people who are involved in the program was just very heartwarming. So I want to thank all of, all of those staff members who took the time to come out tonight to do that. The young man who spoke first from Cheesecake, I'm going to have to pay you a nickel every time I use the, the term teamwork is dream work, because I really like that, so I don't know if that's original or not, but you should copyright that or, very quickly. Mr. Sididino, during his speech, mentioned that school culture is directly related to student performance, and I think that's extremely important for all of, all the people in Olbridge, community members, to, to understand that as we move forward and continue to have a positive learning environment, schools that children want to be in, continuing with the rising level of expectations in character as well as academics, certainly has a direct relationship to our SAT scores, to our performance on a variety of standardized tests. So we're doing great things. Next week is Thanksgiving.